Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special town meeting for October. If you could all please join me and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, the town clerk has informed me that we have met our quorum for the evening. Final numbers will be announced when we have them, but I now declare this town meeting Just before we begin the work for tonight, I had a couple of announcements. The first is, as always, well, first is first. We had posted that Max masks were going to be optional tonight because that had been our practice at other meetings recently. Unfortunately, the school is required to be masked until November 1st. Now, if you decide not to wear a mask, I'm not going to ask anybody to leave, but if you could comply, then that would be appreciated. But again, it is not something that we are going to insist upon. It is a state law, however, and the school is a bit concerned about it. Secondly, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Margaret Cameron, who is a longtime election worker. We've lost her since our last town meeting, so if we could please have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And I also wanted to acknowledge somebody who's here tonight. This is the very first town meeting that I can remember that Bob Hayes has not been a school committee member and, in particular, the chair of the school committee, which it's a tough job. And I can't think of anybody who's done more for our kids than Bob has over the last several years. So I just wanted to acknowledge it, say thank you very much, Bob, for all of your service to the town. With that, the procedural issues, we will be following the rules as laid down by meeting time tonight's meeting. And I would also, as we've done several times in the past, make a motion that the town meeting allow me to decide the quantum of the vote when we take a voice vote. And let me just, thank you very much. Let me explain, however. We will be taking voice votes, for the most part. Some of the votes legally require either a two-thirds or a nine-tenths vote. It makes things much simpler and easier if I can say I find a nine-tenths vote, even if one or two people dissent. If somebody doubts my hearing, and that has happened before, and I do not mind one bit, we will go to a counted vote. That is not a problem. All you have to do is move that we go to a counted vote. So the motion has been made and seconded, Mr. Campbell did. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And thank you. So we also only have one microphone for the floor, which is down here. To speed things up and to make things a little more efficient, I have Nora and Maeve down here. Why don't you stand up so everybody can see you? And they will be taking the microphone to you. All I would ask you to do is come to the end of your aisle, and they'll run it up to you as quickly as they possibly can. So that way, the people in the back can feel free to speak without having to trudge all the way down here. So with all of that, have I missed anything, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Oh, I mentioned that. Once again, the rules of the meeting will be town meeting time. And with that, Article 1. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,165.65 to pay three unpaid bills from prior fiscal years as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, Mr. Hayes, thank you. And this does require a nine-tenths majority vote. So all those, is there any discussion or comment on Article 1? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. I find Article 1 passes with the required nine-tenths vote. Article 2, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $17,590 to supplement the five appropriations as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant that were previously voted in Article 5 of the May 3, 2021 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
This may be easier if I just have one of the selectmen second.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Dyer. Thank you for those who wanted a second.
The balance is in the free surplus.
Thank you very much. Yes, we came prepared for that. So for those of you who are interested, and let's face it, we all are, it's our money, the available funds to the town as of September 2021. In free cash, we have $2,210,786. In the stabilization fund, we have $1,365,131. The school stabilization fund has $187,182. In water surplus, we have $1,542,002. The recreation retained earnings has $20,949, and the solid waste retained earnings has So Article 2 has been seconded. Any questions or comments? Mr. O'Sullivan, yes, could you?
I love the, just the overlay account puts a balance in there. There's nothing in overlay surplus.
Nothing in overlay surplus. Why don't you grab the microphone, just in case? All right. All those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. And as always, could you please introduce yourself by name and street?
Bruce I. Young, 594 Indian Head Street, Hanson, Massachusetts, United States of America.
Thank God.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the members of the Board of Selectmen. This is a two-part question. My first part of the question is, I noticed that the members of the Finance Committee are not recommending line 1 of Article 2, the $9,179. But first of all, can somebody give an explanation what this $9,179 is for and why the Finance Committee has chosen not to recommend it? And then depending on what the answer is, I have a, I'll have a follow-up.
Very good. Would anybody like to explain what it's for over here? I'll call the Town Administrator, Ms. Green.
Yes, Ms. DeYoung. This is for a recording secretary who handles the drafts and handles the minutes for the selectman meeting. They're also going to be helping us with Economic Development Committee minutes, and this funding is for a, it's a part-time employee who has no benefits, not part of the union. They're on an hourly salary, and they should fund them all the way through July 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Young? Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to call on the.
Finance Committee recommendation explanation.
Yes, thank you.
So since we are mid-budget cycle, adding staff or hours, just for us, we prefer to see that at the beginning of the budget cycle. So our initial recommendation was to say no, because once you get to the end of the budget cycle and start again for next year, if you have to cut hours or cut staff, it's always usually not a pleasant conversation. So based on the fiscal state of the town, we didn't recommend it going forward.
Mr. Young?
Yes, I would urge that you follow the recommendation of the Finance Committee on this one. I was there at the town, the selectmen's meeting the other night and heard the explanation for this. I wish to remind everybody that the executive assistant to the Board of Selectmen has always handled the preparation and the transcribing of the minutes. And I'm an old guy now, and I go back to the days of Adela Snow, when there was no computers, there was no spell check, there was no Word. And Mrs. Adela Snow used to do the minutes by hand, and Marion Elms after her, and Mary Marini after her. The minutes are as difficult as you want to make them. They can be a summary, or they can be detailed. I don't know of any other, any other commission, board, or committee who's having trouble doing the minutes, but the executive assistant to the Board of Selectmen, in her job description, that is one of the essential responsibilities of her, and she should be performing that function on a weekly basis and transcribing them and giving them to the Board of Selectmen. So I would urge you to please vote no on line 1.
Mr. Young, would you make a motion to consider each of these lines individually?
Yes, I make a motion that we consider each one of these lines individually.
Seconded. Any other questions or comments? Just raise your hand, and I'll have the microphone brought to you. Oh, yes. Nora, right over here?
Okay. Hi, I'm Gail Joyce, 276 Lakeside Road. I had a question on the line 3 item. Who is our tree warden?
And just to be clear, you're speaking about line 52?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Jameson Shea.
Why don't you, Mr. Dyer?
So our tree warden is Jameson Shea. The Board of Selectmen had assigned that duty to the highway supervisor position.
When was this, when did this happen?
I believe we took that vote earlier this summer.
Okay, so they're asking for an increase?
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Okay, so what's the $65 that they're talking about here amended? Increasing at $65? I mean, it's a small amount, but you know, I mean, I didn't even know who the tree warden
It's most likely 2%, just the 2% increase to keep with inflation.
So who was, who's been handling the tree warden all this time, if he was just elected?
We've gone to an appointed tree warden as of, what, last town meeting? Yes.
And the responsibilities of the tree warden?
The responsibilities of tree warden here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has slowly been changing. Initially, back in the colonial times, it was to have hearings on public trees. So any street trees that you would have out on the street, they had to be cut down. The tree warden was pretty much there to hold the herring and be the moderator. Nowadays, our tree warden, the duties have changed to kind of respond when a tree comes down out on the road, assess any hazard trees, and any public trees to be assessed as well.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Hickey just confirmed it's, it is the 2% increase.
Mr. Dyer, did you want to address Mr. Young's question on line 1?
Sure. So at this time, our office is only staffed with two people. And when I say our office, it's the selectmen's office. In the past, we've had a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful employee, Mary Marini, who would stay and work 60 hours a week. She would come in during the weekends, she would do the minutes from home. She took a lot of work, and she did it on her own time. And I think the town had really benefited at that time with Ms. Marini dedicating her own time to make sure everything got done on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. But just like everything, over the time and over the years, more mandates come through, more reporting has to come through, and our office is understaffed. If you look at surrounding towns, they have two, three, sorry, they have three or four people in their office. Well, we only have two people in our office. We don't have an HR person. Ms. Green, our Town Administrator, is our HR person. So she's wearing multiple hats, and that leaves our one administrative assistant to kind of fill in when we're only with one, just only two people. So with a recording secretary, it really helps out. I know that minutes don't seem that hard. So I'll even go out there and say, anyone in the audience that want to jump up right now and volunteer, because it's not too hard, according to Mr. Young, it is time-consuming, though. And if we take away one person to write out the minutes, we're only down to one person in our office to make sure that the functions continue. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Young, perhaps you could give it to Maeve, and she could run it up to Mr. Young.
I want to remind everybody that every other department in this town does their own minutes, and they have no problem with it with either a part or using their full-time assistant professional to do the minutes. So don't forget, for years, we had one person in that office until we had the Town Administrator. We only had an executive assistant until the Town Administrator was added in the late 1980s. So we have two full-time people in that office, and so I urge you to please vote no on this line. Thank you.
One last quick thing, Ms. Kemit brought up a good point, that this position is just a temporary position to help us get caught up. You know, we had a global pandemic come through, and that really took up a lot of our bandwidth, and we got a little bit behind our minutes, and this is just to help us get caught up. And then to, yeah, just to get caught up. Thank you.
Could you bring the microphone back to Mr. Young, please?
You might as well stay up there.
Now, Mr. Hickey, that's out of order. The, but please, if we can bring this, this particular debate to.
I want to remind you what happens when you say that positions are temporary, okay? And I take the Finance Committee at heart to this one. Once you say you have a temporary, wait till you get to next year, and we'll just pretend that this position is no longer temporary, it's permanent, and nobody ever said it was temporary. I can't tell you how many times that's happened in the town of Hanson. Vote no, please.
All righty. And with that, I believe we've said all we need to say. Am I wrong? No? Okay. So I will, as I do to Mr. Young's thoughtful motion, I will take these line by line, it's a majority vote, and we'll see what we get here. So all those in favor of the recommendation in Article 2 on line 1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair's in doubt. So we have two tellers, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Campbell. If you, I'm going to call the vote again. If you could please hold up your card and keep it up until you are certain you've been counted. So all those in favor of line 1, as recommended by the selectmen, signify by saying, oh, I'm sorry, signify by holding up your card at this time. Thirty. Thirty. Mr. Camp? Eleven. All those voting against line 1, please signify by raising your yellow card at this time. And you got the stage correct, Mr. Hayes?
Thirty-eight.
But the stage was counted, correct? Excellent, thank you.
Twenty-five.
So by a vote of 41 to 63, line 1 is not approved. All those in favor of line 16, as recommended by the selectmen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line 16 is adopted. All those in favor of line 52, as recommended by the selectmen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line 52 is adopted. All those in favor of line 57, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line 57 is adopted. Line 71, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line 71 is adopted. So we will vote, now vote for Article 2. All line 16, line 52, line 57, and line 71 only. All those in favor of Article 2 as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $57,000 to supplement appropriations previously voted in Article 5 of the May 3, 2021 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, for the police department budget. Seconded, Mr. Dyer? Seconded. Any questions or comments on Article 3?
Can we have an explanation what this is for? This is the, is this the ratification of the police contract?
Yes.
Can somebody on the selectmen state, and I know they probably voted on this this evening, so they're supposed to come out of executive session, go into public session, and announce that the settlements for these unions have been settled, and they're supposed to say what the results of the settlement were as far as percentage increases, and any increases to any other fringe benefits, additions to vacations, holidays, et cetera, within the individual contracts. So I'll just say that now, so I can make that statement on this one, and then as those contracts come up, they can make the same statement, because they're required to do that after they vote to ratify it.
Thank you very much. I'll call on the Town Administrator to give an explanation.
So the Board of Selectmen this evening voted in open session to ratify the police contracts. We don't need right now to go through all of the financials on it. The contracts will be available online.
So essentially, the long and the short of it, and I hope I'm not missing anything because I'm kind of going off memory here, but the police officers will be compensated for education in the amount of the Quinn bill over the course of three years. It's phased in. Also, phased in is, no, they're adding a 10-year step, and in addition, they received a COLA of two, two and a quarter, two and a quarter. I'm trying to think if there's another funding piece. And the sergeant was increased in order to, and I don't know the exact figure, but in order to make a difference between the top step patrolman and the sergeant. Oh, thank you. This is helpful. So COLAs, 10-year step, Quinn. And a few of the specialty positions received an increase in their stipend. What's this, what's that mean? Eight hole D.
That's not, that's not contractual.
Oh, yeah.
There is additional holiday.
And an additional holiday for Juneteenth. And that's the long and the short of it.
Nora, can you bring it to Mr. Young?
Is this a one-year contract, two-year contract, three-year contract? And what are the percentage increases in each year? That's something you should know right off the top of your head.
And that's what I said, Mr. Young. Perhaps you didn't hear me. It's a three-year contract, and I said the base wage increases were two, two and a quarter, two and a quarter. So that's, that's the base wage increase. It's a three-year contract. Maybe you just didn't hear me.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article 3? Yes, right down here? If you could just come to the end of the aisle, please. Sorry for the disturbance.
Franklin C. 604 Brook Street. Is the Juneteenth holiday that the police union, I would imagine the fire union's going to get, is that dependent on whether we pass the article tonight with the Juneteenth Town Holiday?
It's a good question. Ms. Federoff?
And I missed the beginning part, so, so can you hit me again?
So we have an article tonight to approve the town have a new holiday of Juneteenth. Is the contract that the police and the fire, I'm assuming it's going to be in all these contracts?
That's a separate, that's a separate issue. So Juneteenth has to be bargained with each union.
Okay.
And you'll see subsequently, it's in all of the union contracts if they get ratified this evening, or funded this evening, I should say. Juneteenth for bylaw employees, so that's your non-union employees who do not have a personal services employment contract, that's where they get Juneteenth.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a separate issue. Yep.
Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you. Catherine Coakley, Harvey Circle, Hanson. Could we, as we go through these, if I'm reading this correctly, the Finance Committee has not recommended this. So as we go forward, could we please have some information from the Finance Committee as they have not recommended funding on a number of these items?
And I believe that's, that has a simple explanation, so.
Yeah, so for 3, 4, 5, and 6, we did not have the numbers until tonight. So part of our procedure is not to make a recommendation simply because we didn't have the dollar amount. Please don't see this as an indication of us not supporting any of those groups, one way or the other. It's just simply we didn't have the number, so we voted not to recommend, and unfortunately, before tonight, didn't have a chance to meet and change any votes, one way or the other.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $61,265 to supplement appropriations previously voted in Article 5 of the May 3, 2021 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, for the Fire and Ambulance Department budget. Seconded. And once again, the Fire Union Local 2713 has ratified the fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 24 collective bargaining agreement. The purpose of this article is to fund these increases in the fiscal year, in this fiscal year. Any questions or comments? And Mr. Young has a continuing question, so. And Mr. Young has a continuing question, so do we have the details on Article Four?
So with this contract, it, again, is two, two and a quarter, two and a quarter. They added a ten-year step. In addition, they, sorry, let me get there. The paramedic stipend was increased, so those folks with a paramedic certification, which is the highest certification for first responders, medical first responders, that was increased to be competitive with the market. And, along with the increase, the EMT basic stipend, which only impacts one person. And because they did not have any personal days, over, phased in over three years, not effective this year, they receive an additional three personal days. So two days effective year one, the next day effective year three, and in addition, they have Juneteenth as a holiday.
Could you please bring the microphone over here? Thank you.
I thank you again. It's Catherine Coakley, Harvey Circle in Hanson. I think further, if I read it correctly, further down, again, paramedics and some people doing, are the EMTs. We have to vote in article for extra money for them, for their education. What puzzles me, if this is part of the requirement, which I believe it is, in order to make a license in that area, if we're paying them extra for education, if I heard it correctly earlier, why are we then, at this later article, going to have to pay them an extra five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, I think, to the paramedics, when it is a requirement of your job, if this has already been worked out in this bargaining agreement, that they got extra money for those positions?
Ms. Federoff?
Sure. And I, I'm not seeing where you're standing, so. Oh, okay. So, the reality is, firefighters do not have as rich of a benefit for education. They get a, I believe, a flat fee sum, and that wasn't changed at all for education. Typically, in these collective bargaining agreements, the firefighters, in lieu of an education payment, receive a paramedic stipend. And this brings them up to market, essentially.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Four is adopted. Article Five. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars to supplement appropriations previously voted in Article Five of the May third, twenty-one annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one, for budgets for departments with members of administrative, professional, local seventeen hundred. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation, the administrative professionals, local seventeen hundred, has ratified the fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-four collective bargaining agreement. The purpose of this article is to fund these increases in this fiscal year. We have a continuing request for more information. Mr. Young? Ms. Federoff?
Okay, so this group settled for two, two and two over three years. They received, some positions were added to the union. There were some language changes, which aren't so critical, not funding-related. In addition, the assistant position, so the assistant treasurer, the assistant collector, the assistant clerk will receive a thousand dollar stipend for certifications that they obtained, which make them, you know, super qualified for their position. They receive Juneteenth. Other language changes. And the conservation clerk received a three hundred and fifty dollar stipend for maintaining a certification she has. And every three years, they're able to be reimbursed for eyeglasses up to five hundred dollars.
Any further questions or concerns? Mr. Campbell? Question is, is which positions were added in the collective bargaining agreement?
The positions which were added are the youth librarian, the child librarian, and the reference librarian. The technical staff, clerical technical staff were already part of the union, as was the assistant library director, so it sort of rounded out those positions that weren't in the union prior.
Any further questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Five is adopted. Article Six. I move to ratify the highway local seventeen hundred collective bargaining agreement requiring no further appropriation for this fiscal year. Seconded. The, the highway department council ninety-three local seventeen hundred has ratified the fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-four collective bargaining agreement. The purpose of this article is to fund these increases in this fiscal year. However, this article does not spend any money. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Malisi?
Is there a, is there a buyout option for all the highway department employees that are there? For example, we have like an interim highway director, they decide to leave, and we have to give them a certain, the town has to pay them out a certain amount of money in order to essentially have them leave?
Ms. Federoff?
Can I stay up here? No. The short answer is no.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Six is adopted. Article Seven. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars to supplement appropriations previously voted in Article Five of this, of the May third, two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one, for building inspector department budget. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation, the purpose of this article is to supplement the current fiscal year's budget in order to fund the salary for a full-time building inspector zoning enforcement officer during this fiscal year. Currently, that position was budgeted for seventeen hours per week, which is not sufficient to carry out all of the duties of that position, particularly in the area of zoning enforcement. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Young?
You know, if we're moving this from a seventeen-hour position to a full-time position, then I'm assuming there's going to be fringe benefits that go with that. But I noticed that the, the article only refers to salaries. So where are the, where are the fringe benefits being added for this particular position? In the, is it somewhere in the rest of the warrant here? Or if not, where is it?
Ms. Green?
Well, with an increase of hours, the full-time position is now thirty-five hours a week. Any employee who works twenty or more hours is eligible for medical, dental, and retirement. The current building inspector has voiced interest in joining retirement. We're still waiting on medical and dental. Our treasurer collector does put aside funds for any, but indirect costs, which are the benefits, medical, dental, and retirement.
Mr. Young?
So what you're saying, there, there's already, are you telling me there's already sufficient, sufficient money in the health, the health insurance line to cover this individual if he, if he needs, and he opts for the health insurance? Otherwise, what do we do? Wait till the May town meeting in, next year? Is that basically what you're saying?
If the building inspector chooses the medical insurance, the treasurer collector does have money set aside for medical and dental. She does have a, she does have money set aside in case we do, people leave during the year, and we need to hire somebody. She has money set aside for these new employees if they choose to join the medical or dental.
Any other questions or concerns? Oh, yes, Ms. Kimmel?
Yeah, I'd just like to advocate a bit for this position. The economic development committee is taking a hard look at Main Street and trying to clean Main Street up. And part of that is going to clearly involve an increase in the need for our zoning enforcement position. And with somebody who's doing seventeen hours a week, all he's gonna be able to do is building inspecting. He's not gonna be able to help us with our enforcement. Enforcement is gonna be key to getting Main Street cleaned up. And I, I would also submit that, once we start being a bit more diligent about enforcement and imposing the fees, I think a case could probably be made that this particular position will pay for itself over and over again, simply by imposing and collecting enforcement fines.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Seven is adopted. Article Eight. I move to amend the fiscal year twenty-two recreation enterprise budget. As printed in the chart, in handout, and further, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of thirty-nine thousand dollars from the recreation enterprise fund expenses to the recreation enterprise fund salaries, and transfer the sum of eight thousand dollars from recreation enterprise fund retained earnings to recreation enterprise fund salaries, and to transfer the sum of twelve thousand dollars from the recreation enterprise fund retained earnings to the recreation enterprise fund indirect costs for fiscal year twenty-two. Seconded. Explanation. This will transfer monies appropriated at the May third, two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting from the recreation budget expenses line item to the recreation budget salary line item. And appropriate addition, appropriate additional monies from the recreational enterprise retained earnings to increase the funding in the recreation indirect cost line item. Any questions or concerns? Oh. And I've been asked to remind everybody, the handout that I referenced in the, in the motion is this one that has been highlighted. And it has a revised set of numbers in the line items. This is kind of a complicated motion, so I'm going to ask Ms. Green to briefly describe it.
Yes, so what happened with this one was that in the May town meeting, unfortunately, they transferred funds from salaries line into expenses. And now that leaves Camp Kowani staff, it leaves salaries unfunded. So what we did, what we're doing at this town meeting is we are correcting that error. So we are, the expenses fund was sixty-nine thousand, seven fifty. We are taking thirty-nine thousand from the expenses fund, and we're transfer, asking the town meeting to transfer that to the salaries line. So thirty-nine thousand, and then plus the four, forty-four, eight forty, equals forty-seven. And then from retained earnings, they had twenty thousand, they have twenty thousand in their retained earnings balance. So we're asking for eight thousand out of that retained earnings to put towards salaries. So our total salary line is ninety-one thousand, eight forty, which will be enough to fund salaries for the Camp Kowani staff through July, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. So in, with indirect costs, that left indirect costs with, with less, because they also took indirect costs and transferred it to expenses as well. So with indirect costs, we took the twelve thousand dollars that remained in retained earnings. We're adding that to direct costs, so that would be a total of twenty-nine thousand, which will cover all of the costs related to running the Camp Kowani. Now, it's a little confusing.
Correcting an error, I think is how we can sum up. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Eight is adopted. Article Nine. I move to pass over this article.
Seconded.
Seconded. And the explanation for the passover is that this was an attempt to spend some of the community preservation committee's money, our money. But on the other hand, it wasn't ready for town meeting consideration, so I was asked to pull this article. Mr. Malisi?
So the CPC talked over this, and then they decided to, you know, pass over it, but I just want to highlight the importance of getting a field, a safe field here in Hanson. Currently, right now, the only one that we have that we play, at least for the youth football team, is here in, here at the high school. While that's great, there's a lot of teams that play here at the high school. It's usually packed full. A, a, a good quality field, anywhere in the town would really help a lot of the kids in the town, so they don't, you know, falling down and hurting themselves on a grass field like behind Indian Head or Maquon School. So I just want to say that, that, that article in May should have careful consideration from all the citizens in the town, because it is a very important project that we should have here in Hanson.
Yeah, and I, if I can, from my understanding of the, of this article, everybody agrees to the need, but the, there were legal issues that came up at the last moment, and therefore, better to be considered at the May meeting. Oh, Ms. Kimmel?
Yes, Mr. Malisi, a hundred percent agree. I don't think anybody here would make a case that that, that, in particular, that middle school field does not need serious rehabilitation. I have a twenty-five-year-old, and when she was playing on it, it needed rehabilitation, and it has not gotten any better. But the issue with the community preservation was there's very specific requirements for spending community preservation money. It's a simple regulation, but very precise, and it does not allow for installation of turf with community preservation money. Now, if the rehab were to be without turf, that's a different situation, and likely, community preservation could pay for it. But again, that's all subject to going back through community preservation. But I think to the person, this board understands and completely appreciates that that field needs to be rehabbed, and, you know, next steps are, are up to, you know, you know, to the folks that have, have proposed this originally, either the sports groups or parks and fields to work with us, and we'll see what we can do with community preservation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article Nine? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article Nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Nine is passed over. Article Ten. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars from the community preservation committee's open space fund balance to be used to acquire the property at forty, four eighty-five Winter Street, assessor's map ninety-eight, lot twelve, containing eight point nine seven acres, more or less, for open space management and related conservation purposes, to be placed in the care and custody of the conservation commission, and to authorize the conveyance or acceptance of a conservation restriction on such property if so required. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation, this portion is, this parcel is a portion of the Little Cedar Swamp, an approximately one-hundred-acre wooded wetland that is one of the headwaters of the Indian Head North Rivers. It contains a portion of the brook, Baker's Brook, that drains the swamp and feeds Indian Head Brook via a culvert under Winter Street. It has become available for purchase. It would join the seventy-five acres already owned by the town, thus strengthening the protection of a major part of the Little Cedar Swamp. The community preservation committee has approved the application for this transfer. The conservation commission will pay for the title search and closing costs from the conservation fund, an estimated eight thousand dollars. Any questions or concerns about Article Ten? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Ten signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Ten is adopted. Article Eleven. I move the town vote to establish a budget line item for pond management in the selectmen's fiscal year twenty-two operating budget. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. The explanation, pond man- Pond management has become increasingly needed because of the invasion of non-native plant species and periodic algae blooms, including toxic, oh, God, why'd you put this word in here? Toxic cayenne bacteria. Sorry, Mr. Clemens, if I butchered.
Cyanobacteria.
Cyanobacteria. There's a reason I didn't go into biology. An ongoing commitment is needed to determine and carry out treatment and preventative measures to cover and sustain the health of Hanson's ponds, including our portion for treatment of ponds shared with other towns. This article will establish a budget line item that should be funded on an annual basis. So the motion is made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Mr. Campbell.
Yes, is there any plan to have any of this funding help with litigation against towns that are surrounding us like Parkland that are violating our waterways?
I believe that's a bit out of the scope of this line item, but can someone, did everybody hear that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, if you could please repeat the question.
Joe Campbell from 150 Woodbine Ave. I was just wondering if there's any part of the plan for this funding to be able to help out with litigation in regards to the surrounding towns that are violating our waterways?
Mr. Clemens, did you want to make a response? Could you please bring the microphone to Mr. Clemens?
This Article 11 isn't about the funding itself. It's about to establish a mechanism for possible future funding. But if you take the whole thing, both Article 11 and 12 together, they don't necessarily dictate exactly what we do and don't spend the money on. It's just that, at the moment, the town does not have a mechanism for spending any money on anything regarding any pond, and we think this is not a good plan for the future. I can't say right now what the total scope would be of what we would or wouldn't spend money on in the future, but anyone who has used the ponds or looks, enjoys them being present knows that they need attention, and this is simply a way to begin paying that attention. I'm not sure myself how far and what form all that attention will take, but we need to do something. This would enable us to start doing something.
So the bottom line, Mr. Campbell, is this is a structural change to just the way the budget looks. The decision as to how to fund that line would come from the Finance Committee's discussion starting in November and culminating in the May Town Meeting. So that number could be anything. It could be used for whatever the town decides to spend it on. Any other questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Delon Joyce, 276 Lakeside. I live on the ponds, and it appears that the Pembroke watershed has a lot to do with clearing up all this algae and non-invasive. So, I mean, I've lived there over 40 years, and the ponds are getting worse. And, I mean, people, I have joined the watershed for Pembroke because, but now they're not treating the Hanson side, so I don't know how that works out because I've got all this green algae growing everywhere. And, I mean, you know, we need to do something. All of our ponds and our environment is deteriorating, and it's getting worse because everything is being dumped into it. So we do need to do something. You know, I don't know why the Finance Committee hasn't even decided, doesn't recommend this, but this is something going forward. We need, we need to, something started now because it's very important.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would imagine that it'll be a vigorous debate in the May meeting in the context of the entire.
Why doesn't Hanson have, you know, we're paying Hanson and everything else? So, I mean, why are we not having anything done on the Hanson side? Just because they have a greater part of Oldham Pond, I'm talking about. You have the town pond gathering, it's state and everything else. And, I mean, what needs to be done for the environment? And this always returns a glowing eye.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Can we find out the Finance's view on it?
Yes, Finance.
So, not disagreeing with any of the comments that were made. It's simply, from a procedural standpoint, we're mid-cycle. It's something that, as we look towards the May Town Meeting and a full budget year, this would probably, for both 11 and 12, answer that question of the not recommend. Again, we're simply mid-cycle, adding some funds and adding some budget lines, looking to see what that would look like in May, and in our consensus, a more appropriate time to address it.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Malisi.
So I have a question and comment about 11 and 12, since they're kind of tied in the same thing, if that's appropriate. So who's going to be spending the money in Article 11 when the line item's there? Is it going to be the Board of Selectmen that would have to make the vote in order to spend the money on the particular, or it'd be Conservation?
It's an excellent question. It would be part of the deliberations for the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee would ultimately make their recommendations to the May Town Meeting, and then the Town Meeting would decide the proper level to fund that line. So 11 puts the line in place, 12 puts some money into that line until May, but the entire budget cycle will really start beginning in November if it hasn't started already.
Yeah, correct. So that's not really my question. My question is, once the line item is funded and there's, let's say, $25,000 in there, I know at Camp Kawani, we have bladder wart, right? That's one of the things that we're trying to tackle before the May Town Meeting. But would the Board of Selectmen be the ones who go through and approve, let's say, if we need $10,000 for some treatment or something like that? Would they be the ones who approve that, or would it be the Conservation Committee?
I'm told that, yes, that would be correct. Board of Selectmen.
And so I appreciate that the Finance has to do their job and go through and kind of make the recommendations at the May Town Meeting, but we need to really start getting a handle on at least the Cranberry Cove bladder wart issue that we have there. So I urge everybody to please, please vote on Article 12 to fund it, at least $25,000 so we can get some kind of a head start around the Cove and the dock areas where we have children learning how to swim and things like that. It's very dangerous for having them there. So I'd like to get that treatment sooner rather than later. May is great, but May's too late for all that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Yes, sir. Mr. Santa Lucia.
Yes, hi.
Yeah, go ahead.
I promise I'll give it back.
She was under strict instructions.
I'm Pepper Santa Lucia, 517 West Washington Street, former member of the Finance Committee. We're here at October Town Meeting, and I have a great respect for the work that they do, and I know how much is involved before they even step up on that stage. But, I mean, I'm assuming the point of having an October Town Meeting is to meet needs and address issues that have come up since the May Town Meeting and may need action before the next May Town Meeting. So it strikes me that it's a good policy to be cautious about what expenditures you might recommend or approve at an October Town Meeting, but to make a blanket assertion that because it's coming up as a need in October, it's not worthy of consideration. I'm not saying that's what you're saying. It sounds a little bit like that, so I guess I'm just asking for some clarification.
So, to address that, it's not necessarily that it's not worthy of consideration. It's Line 11 specifically adds and establishes a budget line, and that is something typically, from a procedural standpoint, we look at in the May Town Meeting. You know, had that been established, and then 12 came along to say, hey, we want to fund this $25,000 from free cash as already established budget line item, it might be a different conversation. But simply because 11 then flows into 12, they kind of got bucketed together, if that helps at all.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. The ayes have it. Article 11 is adopted. Article 12. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 for pond management for the balance of fiscal year '22. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. If the preceding article, Article 11, is approved, funding is needed for the balance of this fiscal year, fiscal year '22, to plan for and carry out early treatment efforts in 2022 for ponds harmed by invasive plants and algae blooms. Additional funding will be requested at the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting for fiscal year '23, which runs from July 2022 to June 2023. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Malisi. Maeve, can you just bring it down?
I'd like to make an amendment to the article to change that to $35,000 instead of $25,000.
We have a motion that has been made and seconded. One moment, please. So we have a motion to change this amount from $25,000 to $35,000. Any question, and it has been seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion to amend?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
I believe this money is only for a study to make a plan, and I'm on the ponds, so I'm in agreement with treating the ponds. I just worry about throwing a lot of money at studies, especially when we have two watersheds that we share ponds with that have already done these studies, seems fairly repetitive in some of our ponds, to redo them, and we are not actively participating in the rehabilitation of those ponds when there's already a study and a plan in place. So I don't know if throwing more money at the study is the right way to go, but maybe throwing more money into the fund, i.e. Article 11 instead of 12.
Mr. Clemens, did you want to comment?
Phil Clemens, 46 Main Street. Don't live on a pond, but I'm on conservation. This actually is a town-wide, not just a conservation or a border health thing, but speaking to the amendment, the proposed amendment, I think the most important thing is to put some money in there. I actually kind of share the idea that if we save some free cash for actual work and took advantage of the studies that have already been done by the Pembroke and One Ponds and Watershed Associations, that might make sense. We don't have, we only have part of fiscal '22 left before us, and we've already started reaching out to consultants and so far have not spent any money because we couldn't, didn't have any. I guess I'm not going to tell the rest of the room whether to vote yes or no for '25 or '35, but as long as we spend something, that's fine with me.
Ms. Kemen.
I'd just like to point out that this is not just for a study. This is actually to plan and carry out, so actually to do some work on the ponds, which I think we've heard from everybody who lives on the ponds and everybody who's involved. I haven't heard anybody say the ponds don't need work. So we need the money to plan, and I agree with, I don't know what your name was, but on the studies, we have studies ad nauseam that we have to dust off when we frequently don't use. And I would not be in favor of spending money just for a study either. We are going to need help putting together a plan, though, for the ponds, and I have no doubt that we will reach out to Taunton River Watershed, North River Watershed, and all of those other associations and try to get best practices. In addition, I'm sure we'll reach out to the Old Colony Planning Council and see what services they might have that they could offer up, and then the Mass Association of Conservation Commissioners and other similar organizations. So we will leverage as many of the low-cost or no-cost organizations as we can and try to save as much money as we can to actually do the work.
Yes, ma'am.
Delon Frazetti, I'm sorry. My concern is, we're not mentioning what ponds we're talking about. These two ladies here mentioned about being in one pond that's split with Pembroke and Hanson. The other ponds that we're concerned about, like when he mentioned the Maqon Pond, those are strictly Hanson ponds. So we need to be pond-specific when we mention these, pond management, okay? I mean, if we're going to be, we're going to have to mention the other Oldham Pond. I don't remember all the other ponds, but we need to be specific, pond-specific, to mention what needs to be done, and not just leave the open-ended pond management. We don't know what pond they're talking about. You can't just say pond management, not specify what pond you're talking about.
Ms. Kemen.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Frazetti, and I think we're not being specific about which ponds because it includes any pond in Hanson, and we won't know until we have more of an analysis which pond is going to require more immediate attention versus another. And I'm sure, just based on the conversation tonight, that's going to be a subject of much debate. But we don't know yet, so if we were to say it's not going to include Oldham, obviously we're not going to treat the portion that's not in Hanson. But, you know, if we were to say something like that and then subsequently find out, oh, my gosh, Oldham is in the worst shape, that portion in Hanson is absolutely abysmal, we would have painted ourselves into the corner. But we're not deciding necessarily tonight which ponds. There will be, and I hesitate to say this word out loud, but there will be a committee that will be working on the ponds, and they will be using a variety of factors, studies of the pond, studies of the bacteria levels, use of the pond, and all that type of stuff to determine which pond would be prioritized for treatment.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Campbell.
So the reason why I seconded Mr. Malisi's motion to increase those funds, for anybody that's never been familiar with a lot of the municipal spending, municipalities have to pay what's called prevailing wage. It's a huge cost difference between just hiring a company and hiring a company that has to be hired under prevailing wage. It's usually almost double the amount of what your cost would be with a just regular private entity hiring another company. So with that, and with municipality spending, $25,000 really goes quickly. It goes very fast. So increasing it with a slight increase, as Mr. Malisi has done, I seconded that because I feel that that's enough to still be fiscally responsible, but then allow this committee to have a little bit of a buffer after the studies are done to be able to know what next should happen between now and May. And we won't be back at this again in May to ask for another funding, another study funding amount again in May. So municipal spending does have taken consideration prevailing wage, and that's a huge cost difference. So I'd rather see the fund be increased.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All right. This vote is on the amendment to increase the number from $25,000 to $35,000. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Now, on Article 12, it has been increased to $35,000. Any further comment on Article 12, or have we pretty much said it? Oh, Mr. Hickey. No.
I apologize for the delay since I've been sitting.
Up here since 2017. Mr. Campbell is absolutely right. Phil, you can back me up on this, but Oldham Pond, we've got two bills from the town Pembroke at $92,500 and $9,500. With '22 coming up, January 1st, we can expect to be given probably another $10,000. So I just wanted to add that before anybody was thinking, don't spend much.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 12 as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay? The ayes have it. Article 12 as amended is adopted. Article 13. I move the town vote for from free cash the sum of $54,000 to pay for the fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '25 interim year adjustments of the town's real estate and personal property values as required Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. Massachusetts General Laws requires that valuations be recertified every five years. These funds will cover a three-year contract for interim year adjustments from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '25. All building schedules, land tables, depreciation schedules, et cetera, are recalculated according to the current real estate market. New income and expense figures are also adopted based on the current commercial and industrial market. The estimate of this amount, of course, is $54,000. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay? All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. I move the town vote to transfer from Article 8 of the October 7th, 2019 special town meeting, the sum of $3,263.46, and to transfer from free cash, the sum of $6,731.54, to hire an outside firm to recodify the general and zoning bylaws. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. The general and zoning bylaws have some inaccuracies that need to be corrected. Making the changes to the general bylaws will be an extensive undertaking, so an outside firm will be consulted for recodification. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 14 is adopted. Article 15. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $8,000, to upgrade the telephone system at the town hall. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. The software for the existing Avaya IP office telephone system at town hall needs to be upgraded so it can be added to the Avaya IP office deployment at the fire department, police department, library, and council on aging. The current telephone system at town hall is aged and unreliable. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 15 is adopted. Article 16. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $7,200, to purchase a tow behind leaf vacuum. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. The highway department maintains the drainage system for the town and grades gravel roadways. There is much leaf litter in the fall, which accumulates around the catch basins and drainage swales. This leaf litter accumulates in the drainage system and is expensive material to be removed because it is contaminated with sand and other hazardous materials. The removal of leaf litter before it accumulates will reduce this expense. Also, leaf litter must be blown off before grading roadways where it mixes with the material when grading. The leaf vacuum will assist in both of these areas. Any questions or concerns on Article 16? Yes, sir.
Do we have a make model?
I've looked around online, some of the commercial grade tow behind leaf vacuums, and the most expensive one I could find was $26.50.
And by $26.50, you mean $26,000?
$2,650.
Okay, very good. Would anybody like to address this? Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have anybody from Highway to...
The microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Very good. Could you bring up the microphone, please?
Hello, Jameson Shave, Highway Director. And I did price out models starting around $2,000, which attach to the back of the truck, but have to be removed every time you go to dump, and they're not really high capacity. This bid was part of a state bid, and it's a tow behind unit, which will have the capacity to do that type of work. If you get a smaller unit, it's just not going to be able to push the amount of material. And as I say, it was a competitive state bid under the state bid process, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor of Article 16's... Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have a make model or any of that information?
Sir, do you have that off the top of your head? Bring him back the microphone, please, Nora.
Yeah, I don't have that information off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or concerns? Very good. All those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 16 is adopted. Article 17. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $15,600, to replace the guardrails at the Poor Meadow Brook location on Route 27, also known as Main Street. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. During a recent inspection of Bridge 807001, 49K, which carries Route 27, Main Street, over the Poor Meadow Brook, Mass Department of Transportation observed loose and missing cable guard systems at all of the approaches. Also, Mass Department of Transportation determined that all concrete posts were deficient and leaning in multiple directions. Money appropriated for Article 9 of the May 3, 2021 special town meeting in the amount of $16,600 will not cover the cost to install a MASH-compliant system with attenuator units. This standard is required by the Department of Transportation for all marked routes meeting highway speed requirements, and it will provide the necessary safety features. The total cost of the guardrail system is $32,200. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 17 is adopted. Article 18. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $99,500, for storm water management and municipal separate storm sewer system permit-related items. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. This money will be used for engineering, mapping, inspections, testing, screening, and surveying to comply with the storm water mandates related to the town's municipal separate storm sewer system, also known as MS4, permit issued by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Any questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am. One moment, let the microphone come.
Oh, Gail Joyce, I just, I need an explanation, what's this MASH-compliant system and... Oh, no, are we on that? No, we're on the next one, right? The storm management one, sorry. The money will be used for engineering, mapping, inspection, testing of storm water. Does that include dirt roads?
Can the highway... Okay.
I need to know if it includes dirt roads as far as all of that storm water.
Very good. Nora, could you please bring up...
Because they don't grade it right on the, on the dirt roads, and that is a big issue with the storm water.
The highway supervisor, please.
Yeah, that pertains to all the drainage systems in place throughout the town. The private gravel roads don't have drainage, per se, and the roads are graded twice a year with the money that's allocated for that purpose. But they're not part of the storm water management unless they have drainage in place, sewer systems.
Please, into the microphone.
So, so the dirt roads are not treated under this article?
No. No, they're not.
And they're, what's $99,000 worth? It just, it seems like, like an awful lot of money coming out of free cash.
Yeah, that's to meet the state-required mandates from the Environmental Protection Agency and other reporting that need to be done, testing to meet those requirements on an annual basis.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 18 is adopted. Article 19. I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. The General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the town administrator approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court. The town administrator is hereby authorized to approve amendments that shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. We have had numerous instances where a contractor will finish building condominium units in a condominium complex or houses in a subdivision, but will not finish the storm water management requirements, curbing, and other conditions set forth in their orders of conditions from planning, Board of Health, Conservation, or the Board of Appeals. This leaves the homeowners or the homeowners' association with a choice of paying to complete the work themselves or suing the contractor to get the work completed. Under our current bylaws, a contractor who still has issues that have not been addressed is permitted to apply to build new condominiums and houses without any consideration to whether they have met their order of conditions or whether they have outstanding code violations. This legislation will strengthen the town's ability to address code violations and advocate for the owners of properties impacted by contractors who have not completed all required work. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 19 is adopted. Article 20. I move the town vote to amend Article 2-1 of the general bylaws to add a new subsection, Section 17, or subsection 17, as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. This bylaw will help to ensure that all town departments, boards, and committees have full transparency when reviewing any matter before them. This will also assist in bringing to light any potential conflicts of interest that departments, boards, committees, and applicants may have. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 20 is adopted. Article 21. I move the town vote to amend Article 2-1 of the general bylaws to add a new subsection, subsection 18, as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. This bylaw will help to ensure that the Board of Selectmen is made aware of any potential conflicts of interest for all members of any board or committee to which they appoint members. This will ensure that all members of the Board of Selectmen-appointed boards and committees communicate with the Board of Selectmen about any financial interests or other conflicts they may have before they move forward with the project and allow the Board of Selectmen to take action if needed. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 21 is adopted. Article 22. I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to adopt special legislation to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. The General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the town administrator approves amendments to the bill before enactment of the General Court, or by the General Court. The town administrator is hereby authorized to approve amendments that shall be with the general public objectives of this petition. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation. This act of special legislation would allow registered voters to remove appointed board, committee, or commission members for cause following the process specified in the printed special town meeting warrant. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Young.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think this is a bit misleading when it says it will allow citizens to remove appointed Board of Officials. That's what it's saying, right?
That's the explanation I was given.
Yes, because the way that I understand this article is that anyone having, believing that they have grounds to remove an appointed, appointed town official, and this is appointed town officials, not elected town officials, it would require two, two petition processes, one involving 150 signatures along with the grounds of recall, and the 150 signatures would have to be certified by the, by the registrar of voters, or the town clerk. And then, once that's done, you would have to get 10% of the voters from each precinct, which in my estimation would be around 800 additional signatures for the second, the second certified petition. And then you would, you would have that, then you would, that would go to the selectmen. The selectmen would be notified that there's sufficient signatures. Then they give, then the, then the, then the selectmen hold a hearing, okay, and decide whether the grounds for recall, the grounds for removal is sufficient, and then they would hold a vote. So really, it, in the, in the end, it's actually up to the selectmen, not the citizens, because if you wanted to do it, you would have two petition processes, and then the selectmen alone, meaning three out of the five selectmen, or three out of 7,700, 7,700 voters in the town, would make the decision on whether that person is, is removed. That's, at least that's the way I read it. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but if that's the case, please let, please let us know, because it's kind of misleading to say that the citizens are able to remove somebody, because in the end, it's up to the selectmen. Is that how you read it, selectmen?
Mr. Weeks.
There we go. Yeah, so the way this article reads is that when you have the, the number of signatures that you had, that you had outlined, yes, it would trigger a hearing for the appointing authority. And this article would be sufficient for any appointing authority, for any board that is appointed. So it's not just in terms of the selectmen, it would be anybody that's appointing. It gives, this article is designed to give a voice to people that if they truly feel that an appointed official that they do not have direct control over is doing something that is against what the wishes of Hanson are, the citizens are, this triggers that hearing in the way that it is worded now.
Yeah. Hello? Can you hear me?
After the 1, I don't know where the 10% is. Maybe you can speak to that directly in the, in the language here, but it should only be 150 signatures.
No, it's, there's two different... Yeah, but there's a second, the second process here. It says if... Section 3, "The petition shall be found and certified by the town clerk to be sufficient. The town clerk shall then submit it, submit same to the town clerk's certific, certificate to said selectmen without delay, and said appointing authority shall forthwith give written notice to said officer." What happened to the 10%?
Section 2, Mr. Young.
Is it in section 2, the 10%? Yes, so see, there is two, two separate, two separate petition processes, one for 150 and then one for 10% of the voters of the town, which was around 800, 800 voters you'd have to get. So you have to go through two petition processes just to get the hearing, and then after that, it's, it could be up to three out of, three out of the five is the selectmen who have the opportunity to make the decision whether those grounds for removal are sufficient to remove this person. So it's not really up to the citizens, it's up to the Board of Selectmen in the end. But you have to go through two whole petition processes in order to, to actually get that of the selectmen, and then three out of the five selectmen could, could remove the person.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I thank you for the clarification. Our explanations sometimes don't have all the nuance that people require, and I appreciate, I appreciate that you were able to clarify.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to add to that. We're going to make a motion, an amendment on the floor because that 10% should not be in there. It should be 125 signatures total should trigger the hearing. 150, I'm sorry.
Should we pass over this for the moment and then return?
No, no, I'd like it to go to vote, please.
Okay. So do we have a motion in writing?
The, the town clerk, town council's working on that.
Yeah, that would have been my amendment exactly, Mr. Weeks, if I, if I read that correctly, I would have made the amendment to do the same thing, so thank you.
Thank you. So if you, just be patient for a moment, I'm sure we can get this all sorted, and then we'll, we'll proceed to a vote. Shall I... Why don't you come to the podium with it? That's better. So Mr. Weeks has made a motion to strike from section 2. The language, and I'll read it, the, the language that's going to be struck, just for clarity, but it... but it, on section 2, the language that says, "Said removal petition shall be signed by at least 10% of the registered voters from each precinct in said town, and to every signature shall be added the place of residence of the signer, giving the street number. The town clerk shall within two working days receipt, submit the petition to the registrars of voters, who shall forthwith certify thereon the number of signatures which are names of voters of said town." That language would be struck, and it's on page 10 of the informational warrant.
Seconded.
Seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Any further discussion on Article 22 as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 22 as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 22 is adopted. Article 23. I move the town vote to adopt Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, to impose a meals excise tax of .75% to take effect on January 1st, 2022. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation: Adoption of the statute would impose a 70, .75% local option meals excise tax of the vendor's gross receipts from restaurant meal sales. The additional revenue will be used to fund future municipal and school class as determined by subsequent town meeting votes. Any questions or concerns on Article 23? Ms. Marini. Oh, other side, Maeve.
My only concern is that at this particular time after the pandemic, I'm not sure opposing a meals tax on our restaurants in town where we don't have an awful lot of them, and people are struggling, and they're trying to keep ahead of the game. I just don't think it should be brought up at this particular time. I would ask that the town meeting pass over this.
So you've made a motion to pass over this article. So the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on passing over Article 23? Yes, Mr. Weeks? Oh, Mr. Dyer?
Can you hear me?
No.
How about now?
Yeah. I hear the concerns that this may be a burden on businesses, but this is .75%. So, for example, if I went down to Venus 3 tonight and I spent $100 at their establishment, this tax would only be 75 cents. So if I had $100 to spend, I think I can spare an extra 75 cents. And then, Mr. Weeks?
I just want to add through the chairman. So with this meals tax, just keep in mind that this is one of, we're one of the only towns that actually don't do this. So anytime you actually go to a restaurant, all of the surrounding towns, because we've looked at this at our open meetings, every single one of them, except for maybe one or two, already have a meals tax. So every time you go and you eat at a surrounding town, even Whitman, for example, you go somewhere in Bridgewater, Abington, you're actually paying for that meals tax. We're one of the only towns that are not doing that, and I do appreciate the financial implications of this, but we are also funding many, many projects, and we are trying to always increase revenue, being mindful of that. So if all the surrounding towns are doing this, I think it might make sense for us to consider this, because the revenue that other towns are gaining is revenue that we're actually losing. So I would encourage folks to think about that.
Ms. Santelucchia.
Hi, Terri Suzanne, West Washington Street. I just wondered if any studies have been done on how much this might generate on a yearly basis?
Why don't you come to the podium? We'll call on the town administrator for that.
Yes, this particular tax, the local meal sales tax, is basically, there are only three towns in this area that do not have this right now, the town of Hanson, the town of Plimpton, and the town of Lakeville. All of other surrounding towns do have this. And basically, this is collected quarterly and distributed to the towns quarterly. So in FY, in 2021, the town of, let's see, Carver, have a total of 59,394. Halifax has a total of 42,659. Pembroke, 161,000. Rockland, 114,000. West Bridgewater, 111,000. Whitman, 111,000. So this stands to generate quite a bit of revenue for the town, and also, it's not just our restaurants, it's also Shaw's that sells the fried chicken and the chicken meals and the prepared meals. Sales tax is also charged on that. So it's all establishments, it's bars and taverns and Shaw's. So the town does stand to make a lot of money off of this in all of our surrounding towns. So every time you go to Whitman, or Halifax, or Pembroke, and eat at one of their restaurants, you're contributing to their revenue. So it's time for other people who come to the town of Hanson to eat to contribute to our revenue. Thank you.
Ms. Santelucia, and then we'll go to Mr. Ellis.
I'm just wondering if the selectmen have already thought about earmarking the funds that don't exist for basic low-end school projects, but is there a future discussion about close funds being earmarked specifically?
And the question was, has this money already been earmarked in any sort of way? Mr. Dyer.
No, it's not a requirement, and I don't believe we have, and I don't think the town can really earmark funds anyhow.
Mr. Ellis.
John Ellis, 742 High Street, Hanson. What would be the cost for us to monitor this, for the tax collector, or the, there's got to be associated costs? Do we have to hire somebody to monitor it?
Ms., oh, Ms. Green.
No, that's basically, once, if town meeting were to adopt this, the Department of Revenue will send a notification to all the local businesses who are impacted by this, and most of them have software, it's just an adjustment to the software. There is no financial impact to them, it does not cost them any money, and basically, the money comes to us in our general fund, it's distributed by the DOR.
So the state's doing this, is that what I understand?
Yes, the Department of Revenue, yes. They distribute the money, and it goes into our general fund.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Yes, sir. One moment, the microphone will be right there.
Daniel W. Stroudman, 510 on Ponson Street. For the last two years, our private citizens, being business owners, some quite small business owners, our restaurant owners in town, have been unconstitutionally persecuted by the leftist state of Massachusetts. This is not the time to impose any additional tax on these private individuals. To those saying that just because surrounding towns choose to impose this tax on those businesses that we should as well, I would ask you, if every citizen of a surrounding town was to walk off a cliff, would you as well? Just because everyone else is doing it does not make it the correct thing to do. This is wildly inappropriate. These private citizens, just like you and I, are suffering, and this does nothing but further the leftist agenda of those in power in Massachusetts and the country as a whole. If you value the Constitution, if you value representative taxation, the values that were outlined when this country was founded, I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Malisi?
Who's paying for this tax? Is it the person buying the food at the restaurant, or is it the actual restaurant that having, I mean, obviously, they would pass it down, but I'm just trying to get clarification on that.
The patrons would be paying it. It would be added onto the bill. Any other questions or concerns? Oh, yes, Mr. Dyer.
I just also wanted to add in one more quick clarification. As Ms. Green indicated about Shaw's, this is not an additional tax on your food that you would have to come and prep, it's already, it's the prepared foods. So if you go and you get a bowl of soup, or you go get a rotisserie chicken, or chicken wings, that would be considered the prepared food, but this wouldn't be, you know, your Cheerios or anything like that, it's just on the prepared food that you take out for lunch. I just wanted to quickly clarify that.
Any other questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
Daniel Stroudman, once again, 510 on Ponson Street. I'd like to reiterate that it doesn't matter who the tax is on, the business owner or the patron, it still impacts the business. It is not the time for this, and it is inappropriate. Please vote no.
Thank you. Any other questions or, yes, sir, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan has moved the question. That seems appropriate.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, we have a motion to pass over. So all those in favor of passing over Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
In the chair's opinion, the nays have it. Would anyone like a count?
Challenge.
Very good. It's not so much a challenge, it's just a request. I'm not pushing any agenda. So all those in favor of passing over Article 23 signify by saying, oh, signify by holding up your yellow card. Please do so until you have been counted.
Daniel, we have someone that wants to clarify the case.
Oh, yes, the clarification?
Please clarify what the vote is for.
Pardon me?
Can you clarify?
What's the vote for?
Oh, I'm sorry. The voice vote we just took was on whether or not we should pass over Article 23. The vote was in doubt, and therefore, if you wish to pass over Article 23, please hold up your yellow card now.
38.
38.
I think one, nine.
Yes, ma'am.
I saw some people put their cards down. I think the vote should be re-
It's a good point. I was questioning that as well. So if, all those in favor of passing over Article 23, please hold up your yellow card now. 19. All those opposed to passing over Article 23 signify by holding up your yellow card And Mr. Campbell?
16, one, six.
So, by a vote of 56 to 52, this article is passed over. Article 24. I vote, I move the town rescind its vote on Article 32 of the May 5th, 1999 Annual Town Meeting, requiring Town Hall to be open five days per week in addition to Tuesday evenings without additional pay or employees. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. The explanation is, currently, the Town Hall is open to the public five days per week, as well as Tuesday evenings. Just a handful of employees work on Friday until noon time. If the vote is rescinded, this would allow the town to more fully staff Town Hall on Fridays without violating the Fair Labor Standards Act to pay employees accordingly. Any questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Captain Copley. Does this mean that the staff then would be staggered to cover the Fridays as well as the Tuesday evening versus being paid overtime for Friday afternoon and Tuesday
The town administrator, Ms. Green. I'm sorry, town council, Ms. Federoff.
So if the town meeting voted in favor of this, of course, we have a bargaining obligation with all our union employees regardless, so there would be no immediate impact, because we would have to discuss what the changes would be, and/or we would like them to be, and then bargain that appropriately. Does that make sense?
So how's it going now?
Is all the chairing to do it now? So currently, the staff that staffs Town Hall on Fridays are salaried employees, mainly the department heads. So they have to work regardless of the number of hours.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 24 is adopted. Article 25. I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to adopt special legislation. To the end that legislation be adopted precisely is printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. The General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the town administrator approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court. The town administrator is hereby authorized to approve amendments that shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. The explanation: This article will allow the town administrator to approve and execute all one-day alcoholic beverage licenses. It is a ministerial matter, since all events for which these licenses are issued are for events at Camp Kwani using bar service selected by the recreational, recreation commissioners and Board of Selectmen, who is TIP certified and understands, enforces all of the policies and procedures set by the commission related to the service of alcohol, such as hours of service, areas in which consumption of alcoholic beverages is permitted, et cetera. The police chief and fire chief receive copies of those licenses in advance of the events being held when alcohol is served. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 25 is adopted. Article 26. I move the town vote to amend Article 2-12, Section 12C, Holiday Schedule of the General Bylaws, to add Juneteenth as a paid holiday for wage and personnel employees. Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation: Juneteenth is a recognized state and federal holiday, observed on June 19th to commemorate the abolishment of slavery in the United States. All state and federal buildings are closed, and many Massachusetts municipalities have adopted Juneteenth as a locally observed holiday. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 26 is adopted. Article 27. I move the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation, by deleting Sections 11A through 11E in its entirety and inserting the new as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. Seconded. The changes to the compensation plan are in bold italicized text. The changes include increasing the minimum range for the Camp Kwani caretaker position from thirteen dollars and fifty cents to fourteen dollars per hour, adjusting the maximum range for the assistant caretaker, and increasing the maximum range for the beach director from twenty dollars per hour to twenty-five dollars per hour. The minimum range for the IT director has been adjusted to get the, that salary in line with the market. The increase in the building inspector's salary reflects a change from part-time to Any questions or concerns on this article? Mr. Ellis.
Um, I'd like to hold Item G, which is the town planner salary.
I don't know if you so much have to hold it as to make a motion to change it.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to change, to add ten thousand dollars to Item G. Is that correct?
In which column, sir?
Uh, which one? It's, it's, yeah, it's the town planner. You go over, over to the line.
Yes. So what you're asking, sir, is to change Line G, Town Planner.
Yes.
In the second column.
That's correct.
From forty, to change the upper limit from eighty thousand to ninety thousand dollars.
That's correct, Sean.
So that motion has been made and seconded. Do you want to give an explanation, Mr. Ellis?
Yes. We're having difficulty trying to fill that position. Um, the town administrator had two applicants for that position, and then he withdrew at some point in time. And then she was advertising quite a bit, and it takes a long time, and you need more money to, for the position. That position brings in a lot of money to the town. They bring in grants for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Route fourteen was instrumental in redoing that with the state. All these intersections that were done at the intersection of fourteen, fifty-eight, and High Street. The grants for crosswalks by the schools was all done by, by the town planner.
All right. So is there any other comments or questions on this motion? Yes, sir. Nora, could you bring the microphone right over here, please?
Paul Benardato, seventy-two Brookside Drive. I thought that this position was already filled about two weeks ago. Am I mistaken?
Yeah. I think I can clarify this. This, this schedule is something that we do, I believe, every October, and it doesn't expend any more money. It just sets the minimum and maximum ranges for the salary. So what Mr. Ellis is proposing is that they're having trouble getting someone for the, for even the, well, it hadn't changed from the previous year. They're having trouble getting somebody to, uh...
Uh, just to clarify, we did hire someone. Uh, but Mr. Ellis is correct in the sense that we were having a hard time attracting candidates to the Town of Hanson because we are behind the market on the salary range for town planners.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm Joe Campbell. I'm the current chair of the twenty-fourth board. Mr. Ellis is our vice chair of the twenty-fourth. In my sixth year tenure here on the twenty-fourth, I've been for two town planners. The first one, I don't know why she left. Salary. The second town planner, the second reason why she left. Salary. What we have a feel of is not investing in the right areas of the town. We have a lot of changes that we foresee coming down the pipeline. The worst thing that we want to have is that our next town planner, if it has been hired to use the town as a stepping stone. I support Ellis's request a hundred percent.
Any other questions or concerns?
Section eleven B under the administrative, uh, full-time people. Okay, we, I, Line I, Camp Kwani does not have a full-time caretaker. They stood the salary wage at fourteen dollars. That's not, not necessary to be there. But we do have under Section eleven C for part-time positions, what's listed is the assistant caretaker. The base salary didn't change. That's supposed to be a starting salary of fourteen dollars. That, that's where the fourteen dollars should have been, not left at the thirteen fifty. And that was already voted in. So that's what the minimum wage is for the assistant caretakers. The upper figure is not necessary because we don't have reaching that yet, but that's okay.
Are you making a motion, ma'am?
I'm making a motion.
Nora, can you? Yeah.
I'm making a motion.
Yeah. Ms. Frazetti, if we could just delay that for a moment because we have a motion for Mr. Ellis that I'd like to clear up first, then we'll move to another motion. So any other questions or concerns about Mr. Ellis's motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Mr. Ellis's motion to increase Line G, Town Planner, by, from, to, by ten thousand dollars to make the range forty-five thousand to ninety thousand dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. So that amendment is carried. Ms. Frazetti, which amendment would you like to make?
I'm making a motion, Line I, under eleven B, that we rescind the fourteen dollars and leave it at thirteen fifty because we don't have a, a full-time caretaker, and then go down to eleven C.
Well, first, we should, we should take care of that one first.
Okay.
So the motion is, is to reduce the lower range on Line I, Camp Kwani caretaker, from the proposed fourteen dollars to the existing number of thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Correct?
Correct, because we have no full-time caretaker.
So is there a second?
Sorry.
Seconded. Uh, who seconded it? Could you state your name, sir?
Brian Frazetti.
Thank you, Mr. Frazetti. I couldn't see you with the mask on. Any other questions or concerns?
Do you want to speak for the citizens?
So I understand Ms. Frazetti's request is to lower the hourly fee for the Camp Kwani caretaker from fourteen dollars to thirteen dollars and fifty cents. So, um, I want to say back a few months, the chair of the Recreation Commission, Diane Cohen, came before the Board of Selectmen and asked for the increase to fourteen dollars from thirteen fifty for caretakers so that we could, again, attract competent people to, um, fill the caretaker position. So I'm not sure.
Our, our caretakers are assistant caretakers, not full-time caretakers. So that's why it has, it's in the wrong section. That's all it amounts to. We do not have a full-time caretaker. We only have part-time caretakers. And that was where Diane's request went in, was for the part-time caretakers to have a minimum wage of fourteen dollars. And you didn't change the minimum wage. So our caretakers are now being paid fourteen dollars, or fourteen fifty, depending on what, how long they've been there. But they're getting paid fourteen dollars an hour, and that's not what this reflects. This reflects a thirteen fifty minimum wage. And our minimum wage is fourteen, and they're all part-time. And that was already approved by, um, wage and personnel and everything else.
Mr. Santa Lucia. No, one moment, sir. If I could have Mr. Santa Lucia go first.
Uh, this is, yeah, Pepperstein Lucia. I, um, if we don't have a full-time caretaker, and fourteen dollars is a comp, is a competent wage for that person, why spend the time trying to reduce it down to thirteen fifty? Let's just go down to Line Q for assistant caretaker and set the wage for that where it needs to be. I mean, it sounds like she's saying that the caretakers are making fourteen or fourteen fifty dol, fifteen an hour, fourteen fifty an hour. This is a range, right? So these people can be paid above the thirteen fifty that's listed there.
Yes.
So I'm heavily confused as to why we need to spend time on this, frankly. We're talking about a range. If the ra, if the starting salary's too low, let's raise it. But why, why do we need to bother with this full-time caretaker line if we don't even have a full-time caretaker?
Wait for the microphone, please.
That's fine as far as Line I for the eleven B is, but what we need to do is correct the assistant caretaker Line Q, like Mr. Santa Lucia said, to the fourteen dollars. Otherwise, it's not correct.
Do you, Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing who's...
I, I was, but I, I, basically, he had, he had on my point.
Okay, very good.
Right here.
Oh, Mr. Wee.
I just want to say thank you for finding that correction, Ms. Frazetti, and I would make a motion. We move to the vote, please. Uh, the amendment to increase to...
To decrease in Line I.
Oh, is that, is that your actual vote to, your amendment is to decrease?
Line I.
All right, it has a second, so we, can we move to the vote on that? And I would, and I have no problem making a motion.
Do you want to reconsider your motion, ma'am, to, uh, to change another line?
Okay, all, on eleven B, where Mr. Santa Lucia says we don't need to bother changing Line I, we can re, strike that one out. But we need to go to eleven C and correct it. So that's where the amendment needs to be made, for eleven C, Line Q, where it says assistant caretaker. The beginning wage needs to start at fourteen dollars.
Very good. So, uh, your amendment is to increase the, the minimum in the second column from thirteen fifty to fourteen dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All the, uh, any further comments? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Maureen Toomey, sixty-seven Goldwyn Drive. I just have a question on, um, Q, the assistant caretaker. It's going from thirteen fifty to twenty-five, to fourteen, to twenty. I think that's a typo. Please.
You're lowering the top range. Right, but it had been up to twenty-five dollars, and now you want to bring it down But it doesn't... So it should, it should be exactly the same. All righty. Ah, I never thought this one would be difficult. Apparently, there is a typo in Line Q. It should read thirteen fifty to twenty-five dollars in the second column. That would be the range. Ms. Frazetti has made a motion to increase the bottom number to fourteen dollars. So the range would be fourteen dollars to twenty-five dollars. That has been seconded. All those in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Any other questions and concerns? Yes, sir.
Chad Device, five one nine Spring Street. I just got a question. So you got in eleven B of your Camp Kwani caretaker, who would be a range of fourteen dollars to twenty dollars, and that's your caretaker. But then in Section eleven C, you would end up having your assistant caretaker, an assistant, a part-time job, having a pay range of now fourteen to twenty-five? So the range would actually be higher than the caretaker? No, but still, what I'm saying is...
Yeah. Uh, the answer that I got from the town administrator is that we have not had a full-time caretaker, and therefore, they have just left that line alone. Uh, the assistant caretaker line has been used, and therefore, it got more attention. Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Santa Lucia.
Hi, Teresa Santa Lucia. In Section eleven D, seasonal positions, I'm curious as to the rates for WSI, water safety instructor and lifeguards. Most, that is not marketed, and most of those positions actually have certification, annual certification requirements that range from two-hundred to four-hundred dollars a year. Um, and I'm just wondering if there was any discussion about raising the water safety instructor and lifeguards for the outside price, outside salary.
Oh, Diane, do you want to speak?
Not really.
Could we have a microphone down here, please, Maeve? This, this woman right here.
Diane Cohen, Pleasant Street. We are gonna raise the rates. We couldn't open the beach when we get the lifeguards and the swimming program. The plan is for the swimming program to be self-sustaining and not come out of already previously established budgets. So that's why we have such a big range, and we are gonna offer incentives to pay for those certifications and, in exchange, for people working at the beach for that summer, and hopefully summers beyond that. So when we finally settle our budget, we're gonna work with the people that apply for those jobs.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Ms. Cohen. So, uh, Ms. Cohen, I think the question on the table is, do you believe that the upper limits of the seasonal positions are adequate to be able to attract the right candidates? I know last year that was really posed quite a problem.
Any questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, please.
I love you.
No, 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 I like the microphones. It's a bit, it's a weird room to be heard.
Okay. Um, okay. Sorry, I hate doing this.
Oh, take your time.
We are, we're going, we were told, we're gonna raise, we're gonna look at raising those rates when we see what our final budget is. We're hoping that, um, our incentives and everything can do that. We realize there's a large lifeguard shortage, and the beach director is working, is up to twenty-five, but water safety instructors, and we don't have a boating instructor. Water safety instructors and lifeguards, we have to look at what the program is going to warrant when we officially have the program played out. And we want it to be self-sustaining, so we have to see what that's going to look like. So we kept it low for right now.
So just understanding the market, I'd like to make an amendment to at least raise the range to eighteen dollars for both eleven DB and C, uh, so that there's at least some flexibility when the rec commission is able to do their hiring and, uh, you know, recruits lifeguards for the beach.
Do we have a second on that motion? Seconded. So any other questions or concerns on, um, on Ms. Santa Lucia's amendment? Yes, Ms. Frazetti.
On, you're briefing the pay rates and all of that, and you should be done in May, for the May town meeting, and that's when we would have addressed the different changes of the ranges. But in actuality, we have already changed wage and personnel. Through wage and personnel, we have actually changed the minimum wage for some of these positions already. But that's not what, is not, never has been reflected, and I brought it up a couple of years ago, that the range was never correct, and, because our starting range is more than what it shows on here, is thirteen fifty. Our top number needs to change. At that time, we were within the range, but naturally, with prices and increases that have come about, but this is not, we're not doing anything with... But this is not, we're not doing anything with this, the beach director or anything else until next May. So that's the reason why, we did, that's why nothing was proposed to have increases at this time for eleven D.
All right.
And that's, because it's strictly a seasonal position, but they can do what they want.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Typically, the town meeting is not the time for a wage and personnel meeting. So I'd like to bring this to a conclusion. I think the meat's been picked off the bone, but...
I can't help, but I can't let this go without saying in a little bit of caution to people. Most professional careers have certain certifications or advancements or something, or certain requirements in order to maintain your license. Most employees don't necessarily pay for that. They may offer something towards it, but they don't pay for it outright. And so I think if, once we open up that board, and I have no idea what life, you know, the kids at the beach are, but once we open that up, you could open it up to all departments, and it could end up being a very costly thing. I think if the town wants to offer people a stipend towards their recertification or advancement, or...
I, I think there may be some confusion, though, ma'am. This would not be going to education. This is purely setting the wage range for those people that get hired.
I guess I got, I had the feeling from what was being said, because they're required to have certification, let's expand the wage.
I, I think the point was, is because they're cert, highly certified, they become very valuable, and sometimes, our range does not reflect the market. Any other questions and concerns? I'd really like to take a vote. All those in favor of Ms. Santa Lucia's amendment to increase eleven D lines B, C, and D from a top range of $16 to a top range of $18? All those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Now, what I'd like to do is take a, take a vote on the article as amended. All those in favor of the article as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article twenty-seven is thankfully, uh, as amended, is thankfully adopted. Article twenty-eight, "I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of $33,295 for a collective bargaining agreement obligation." Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation: These funds are requested to provide payment for unused sick and vacation time per the collective bargaining agreement for an employee that will be retiring on accidental disability in fiscal year 2022. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of article twenty-eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article twenty-eight is adopted. Article twenty-nine, "I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of $36,627 to fund the salary of a firefighter slash paramedic pending retirement of an existing member of the fire department." Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation: These funds are being requested to hire a firefighter slash paramedic while we await the accidental disability retirement of a current member. This request will allow the new hire to begin training and attend the fire academy. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article twenty-nine is adopted. "I move the town vote to," oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Article thirty, "I move the town vote to insert a new section to the general bylaws, Article two dash one, as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant and renumbering section one of Article two dash one to section one A." Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation: This article will ensure that all appointed volunteers have their primary residence in Hanson. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of article thirty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article thirty is adopted. Article thirty-one, "I move the town vote to transfer $20,194.72 from the amount appropriated under Article eleven, line six, of the July 29, 2020 annual town meeting, to purchase a new vacuum trailer for the water department." Seconded. Explanation: The balance of this article will be used to purchase a new vacuum trailer for the water department. The current one is over 20 years old and can no longer be serviced. This is a vital piece of equipment which is used to clean out debris from gate boxes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of article thirty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article thirty-one is adopted. Article thirty-two, "I move the town vote to transfer $325,464.47 from the amount appropriated under Article five of the October 1, 2018 special town meeting, to replace well number one at the Crystal Spring well site." Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation: The deep well at the Crystal Spring well field needs to be decommissioned, capped, and replaced with a new well. This well will be located in approximately the same vicinity. Any questions or concerns about article thirty-two? Seeing none. All those in favor of article thirty-two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article thirty-two is adopted. Article thirty-three, "I move the town vote to transfer $500,000 from water surplus to be added to funds appropriated under Article twenty-three of the May 4, 2015 annual town meeting, for the continuation of water exploration." Seconded by Mr. Dyer. Explanation: The town is currently in the process of exploring a new well site off Old Pine Drive. This money will get us into the next phase of permitting and submittals for further approvals from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and preparing a budget for pilot testing, as well as the design for a new water treatment plant. Any questions or concerns on article thirty-three? Seeing none. All those in favor of article thirty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. The ayes have it. Article thirty-three is adopted. Do we have a motion on article thirty-four? I have Mr. Cohen as being, oh. Could you bring down the microphone, Maeve?
How you doing?
Uh, could you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Kevin Cohen, 493 Spring Street. I, along with 167 other concerned citizens, have brought forth this article thirty-four. I'll read the article.
If you could just make the motion.
Okay. Um, I, I would like to read my explanation, which, for some unknown reason, was not included in tonight's, uh, town meeting.
Sir, if you could make the motion first, and then I'll give you time for the explanation.
I, I make the motion for the town to vote for a non-binding resolution, supporting a vote by the Hanson Board of Selectmen, the appointing authority for the members of the zoning Board of Appeals, to remove all current members of the board, including alternate members, at the first public meeting following the close of this town meeting.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Uh, feel free to make an explanation.
And I, I would like to include my explanation, which, like I said, for some unknown reason, was not included, as all the other explanations were included.
If, if I could just say, the explanation has no legal importance. The, it's the motion that has the legal importance. So the motion has been made and seconded. You can say whatever you would like about, about the article.
Okay, great. Uh, the Hanson Zoning Board of Appeals has recently reorganized three times. A lot of people in town are not aware of this. There is much evidence that the agenda was not posted, and no public meeting was held regarding the new reorganization of the current officers, which is contrary to the open meeting law, for which multiple complaints have been filed against the Zoning Board of Appeals. This has caused for the town to question the trust of this board. There's also been many complaints made to the State Ethics Commission in regards to several members of the board involving alleged self-dealing. The, the State Ethics Commission is looking into the personal relationships on this board, family relations, prior business dealings that were never disclosed properly. And some members may have benefited financially from this. It, it does warrant an investigation. Uh, I would also like to point out that there is a question about the, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which also serves as a Chair of the Board of Health. The, this is two very important land planning boards, and to have one person controlling both boards seems very unethical. So I would like to move the town to vote, or, or discuss, if needed.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns about article thirty-four as proposed by Mr. Cohen? Mr. Hayes, maybe?
Bob Hayes, eighty Green Grove Lane. Did we not vote on article twenty-two that says basically the same thing? Or is, I'd like a little clarity on that, maybe from Town Council? Article twenty-two, "To remove an appointed board committee or commission officials."
Ms. Kement.
Um, I, I don't think they're necessarily mutually exclusive. Twenty-two is requiring 150 citizens to essentially compel the selectmen to have a hearing. Uh, Mr. Cohen's, and, and so that's, this is supported by the selectmen, this was proposed by the selectmen. This is a citizen's petition, which, as you know, we're required to put on the warrant. And I think it's slightly different in that his article isn't requiring 150 signatures. He's already gotten the signatures he needed to make it a citizen's petition, to, again, it, his, his article doesn't necessarily compel us, it requests us. I mean, you know, you can, you can try to slice and dice, but they're very similar.
So the reality is, even by virtue of the language of the motion, this is non-binding, so it doesn't compel the selectmen to do anything. In addition, the selectmen are compelled to follow the bylaw, so they couldn't simply just remove all of the zoning board members. Instead, you would have to have the hearing process pursuant to the bylaw, which you would have to demonstrate cause.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of article thirty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say, signify by saying no?
No.
The ayes have it. Article thirty-four is adopted. Article thirty-five, do we have a motion? Maeve? And Mr. Malisi?
I make a motion to pass over article thirty-five.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
We have a motion to pass over article thirty-five and a second. Any questions or concerns? Oh, who seconded it? Mr. O'Sullivan has, has seconded it. Any questions? Oh, yes, Mr. Ellis.
I would pass it over. Explanation?
Oh, Mr. Malisi, could you give an explanation?
So, at the, um, citizen's petition town meeting that we, that we were both at, the Board of Selectmen actually voted to help me get this on the May town meeting, um, with legal counsel's help. Like I said, I'm not a lawyer, so, so, um, the Board of Selectmen voted, um, all four of them, including Mr. Hickey, to, uh, to, to help me get this, this article and the next article on the May town meeting. And it's actually gonna be written by the board and Ms. Federoff, the Town Council, so it'll be legally binding and everything like that. So, that's, that's the reason why I'm passing over, is because that was the, that was the promise I gave to Matt Dyer when, when we did this, so I wouldn't cause any more time. Just so happens to be the end of the night, too, so we all get to go home early.
Go home early? That horse has left the barn. All righty. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over article thirty-five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
There's always one, isn't there? Yeah. The ayes clearly have it, and, uh, article thirty-five is passed over. Article thirty-six, Mr. Malisi, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to pass over article thirty-six also.
Seconded by Mr. O'Sullivan. Uh, all the, any questions or concerns about passing over article thirty-six? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over article thirty-six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article thirty-six is passed over. Article thirty-seven, Mr. Malisi.
Um, I make an article pass over, um, I make a motion to pass over article thirty-seven due to the passage of article thirty, which the Board of Selectmen went through and essentially did the same thing that I did, so...
Seconded by Mr. O'Sullivan. Any other questions or concerns about article thirty-seven being passed over? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over article thirty-seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article thirty-seven is passed over. And with that, thank you, thank you, thank you. This has been a, a longer-than-usual October town, town meeting. Uh, I now adjourn the town meeting, seen die.